Jack. All right, it's past thirty, I'll go ahead and now offer a prayer and then we'll stand for the bridge. Lord, as we come before you this morning, Lord, our nation has witnessed the tragic loss of an innocent life. Lord, it was well-lived, that was, just seeking to have a civil discourse in our, in our country. And Lord, it's, just turn to you and, and ask that we can come together as a, as a nation, Lord, and find that we can have discussions like we do here at our meetings. We have, we have discussions, sometimes we don't all see things the same way. Lord, didn't we disagree that we can walk out of the road and we're able to come back again and, and take up the business for the county? And we're so grateful for that. So, Lord, as our nation heals, Lord, just pray that you put your hand upon our nation. I pray for our leaders, Lord, as they face themselves threats or possibilities of threats. And, and that's not what our nation was founded on. So, we just turn to you, Lord, because you have all, all the answers. We know you are in control. And, Lord, we just ask you to be with us this morning as we take up our, our meeting. Pray for those who have lost loved ones, pray for those who have loved ones in the hospital right now. And, Lord, just carry us forward in all that we, we do and make everything we do bring honor and glory to your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may you see. Okay, so, as we go through the agenda here, and there are a couple items that I need to bring up that didn't get on the agenda, but they're pretty, pretty routine items. The first thing we have are minutes for September ninth. And if you've had a chance to look at those, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes for ninth.
Second it. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussions? See none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all close, same time, motion, care of minutes. All right. Next, we did receive a CDT application this week. So, let's, let me find that. And we'll take it up. And this is from the Lebanon Rule Fire, and they have included their application along with their twenty-four final. I have looked at that, so I'll pass it down for review. And then, if I have a motion second, you'll, you'll take that up. Linda, did you get any rain out of your way yesterday afternoon?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, a little bit here in town, didn't see anything else.
Here, it would be an order. I'll make a motion to approve the CDT for Lebanon overhaul fire protection district.
Motion to approve could be carried. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second for the amount of six thousand dollars.
Okay, and this would be a motion to approve the application and the twenty-four final, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion second to do that. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all close, same time.
Where do we need to initial this?
Looks like Linda had everything marked there.
Is it on mine? You should have initially marked it.
Yeah.
Next order of business would be general county business. And I've got two or three items, but I will start at your end of the table, Eric, if you have anything.
I do not.
Joe?
Nope. It seems to be moving right on.
Ryan, good?
Okay.
Luke, so? All right, then the next thing we have, Linda had a court order that we need to approve. And what this is, there was, it's a court order to transfer fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents of expenditures from CDT to Roden Bridge for correction of the accounts payable entry. And so, it was taken out of the wrong fund. It needs to go back into the right fund, and we have to do that via court order. So, I have to review that with any motion.
So, it originally came out of Roden Bridge?
No, it came out, what was the note there's, here's our notes here. I mean, it came out of CDT to Road from twenty-two category, CDT to O two Roden Bridge. It just was taken out of the wrong account, so this is putting it back in the right account. It shouldn't have came out of CDT, Eric, it should have came out of the Roden Bridge budget. But it was taken out of CDT, so now we need to take it and put it back into CDT, is my understanding.
From Roden Bridge.
Correct.
From CDT to Roden Bridge.
Yeah. Maybe the reverse, I'm reading what Linda has, has right here, transfer of expenditures from CDT to Roden Bridge, so.
Okay. So, maybe it's taken from Roden Bridge and put in CDT? Because we're taking, what we're going to sign off on here is to take it from CDT and put it back to Roden Bridge.
Okay, then that matches Linda's notes here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's what I was going to say. That's what, and I was reading something, but I was hearing it a little bit different, and that's why I wanted to make sure of it. I would make a motion to accept this order here to get that transfer completed.
Got it, second it.
Okay, I have a motion, second to approve the court order to correct an accounts payable entry. Any further, any further discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all close, same time, okay. We've got the court order done. Okay. Look at that little stack over here. And then everything else I think she has will be in the consent items, so I'll hold on to those for a minute. And then what I have would be, I had an inquiry from a gentleman this past week regarding, and I'm going to pull it up on the big, big screen here this morning. Might be easy to illustrate, I don't know. Everybody would humor me, I want to try to get to, we're not watching TV, Jack, okay?
Okay.
But if you want us to, tell us what's your favorite channel.
Well, pick a show on Netflix and go from there.
I could totally find something.
Up interest. Guys, what I'm hoping to do, and by the way, this TV belong, this thing belongs to me. I brought it over so we could use it. The county has never purchased anything like that for this road, but I do have, I, I will want to have a discussion about putting a couple monitors in here, one that the public can see and one we can, we can see when we go into budget. And this has, this is a road that a customer inquired about, and I'm using it for, this was a platted subdivision many, many years ago. So, if you see that yellow there, that, back in that day was Broward, Broward Wood. However, when nine-one-one came along, we readdressed, that is now Josie Lane. And that was, there was a quick claim deed to the county on June sixth of one thousand, nine hundred and eight. So, is that nineteen eighty? Okay, and the question that the gentleman has, he owns, if you look at right above Broward Wood, he lives in lot sixty, in fifty-nine, fifty-eight, fifty-seven, fifty-six, fifty-five, and fifty, and fifty-five are, are his. He's acquired fifty-two, fifty-one, fifteen, forty-nine. So, he owns property on both sides of Broward Wood. Keep in mind, this is not a county maintained road. It was a quick claim deed to the county, but it was, but it was never maintained by the county. So, it has remained in a state of, of really non-use by the property owners now for, for several years. So, his request is, was pretty simply, said, "I would like to clear all the brush and everything that's grown up between those, on both sides of what is now Josie." Now, Josie extends there across the road to that other cul-de-sac, and we do maintain that, and that is on the cart list. But what's in yellow there is not on the cart list. I don't have any records of the county ever maintaining that. And so, his, his request, again, is just, can I have permission to do that? So, in my research, I find that he did equip, not him, but the, but the landowner that platted that, did a quick claim deed to the county for that strip of property. Keep in mind, a quick claim deed is not a warranty deed, it's just anybody can report anything. So, the county never took possession of it in the sense that we, we took possession, we maintained it. So, I don't have any record of any resources being applied to this, to this road, and it's never been carp funded. So, there was two ways I was thinking about approaching this, and one would be that statutes, I believe, twenty-two, twenty-eight, one ninety, I believe, if I've got my notes right, speaks to just abandoning property if it's not being used. So, that, that's one way. But then the second thing that, that I thought of, really, we've never taken possession of it. It's his. I don't see any reason to ask other than to make some notes in the minutes that Broward Wood, now Josie, as it pertains to this discussion of those lots, was never taken in as a, as a county road. So, I have two suggestions. One is, we just simply do nothing, other than notate it in the minutes so that some future commission can look back if it comes up again, and they can see what this commission did. And we call the gentleman, it's, you own the land on both sides. It's, it's your, your property. Or, we can take and we can do a quick claim deed to this individual. We have a legal description that we can take from the original quick claim deed that spells out this section of property, and then we report that as a quick claim deed. We're not warranting anything, we're just, here, here's a quick claim deed back for this property, it's yours. And, and then that becomes a public record that somebody can look at at any point in the future, so. And, yeah, I just bring this up for, for, for discussion as to what you think the best way. And also for us to all be aware and, and also know that, you know, what is the, the proper way to, to do this. So, Eric, do you have a question?
I guess, does he own forty-eight, two sixty?
Forty-eight, two sixty. He does not, forty-eight and forty-seven are, I don't see anybody, any homes on those. And he does own sixty, but he doesn't own sixty-one, sixty-two, or sixty-three.
So, forty-nine through sixty is what he owns?
He owns forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two. Now, fifty-three and fifty-four have ingress and egress, or they're on Zuri Highway five.
Okay.
So, on that cul-de-sac there, those two, that fifty-four and fifty-three, they have entrances over there on, on Highway five.
Okay.
So, he owns forty, he doesn't, he owns forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty. And his address is actually on, he lives on sixty, so his address is actually there on what then was referred to as Hillside Drive.
Yeah.
And then forty-eight and forty-seven would have ingress or egress.
On Hillside.
Yes.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't damper anybody from?
No.
Doesn't look like it.
No, because everybody's got egress, they've got access everywhere in some other manner there.
Absolutely, yeah.
It doesn't appear that nobody's been used to entering there in the forty-seven, forty-eight from the other side.
No, and Joe, just looking it up on GIS, I don't see any, any homes on, on, on forty-eight in particular. I don't know, I looked on forty-seven, but I know not on forty-eight.
Right.
So, my recommendation would either be simply nothing, or other than notate it in the minutes that we have the discussion, and, or we do a quick claim deed back to the current landlord.
I like the first option.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just leave it as it is and let it roll.
Correct.
As far as for discussion, it doesn't seem to be damper anybody or anything there, and he still has full control. He wants to enter, I mean, it's his property both sides, he wants to clean up the edges.
He wants to, to clean it up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we don't have no claims, no warrant to it anyway.
Correct.
Right? Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate you bringing that up too, but yeah.
I will notify you of that.
Yeah.
All right, let's see what else. We had an email regarding commissioners meeting over in Texas County. If we want to do that, we might have to decide today, but we'll need to get that on and post it as a, as a meeting we need to. That's future tense, and there was one other thing that came up with the county. Was there another email in there?
Uh, Linda's.
Linda's sent something, maybe that was.
Sunshine Law requests a, which is in October as well.
Yeah, she's having a meeting, I think, October twenty-second. Sunshine Training is open to, um.
Yeah. The owner referring to is that, that's the, was that the tenth of October or something?
I don't remember the, uh.
I think I wrote it on my big calendar when I put it in my. I think that's all that I see, unless I just missed something.
Okay, we're in general county business, and seeing nothing else from the commission, we will, we're going to the warehouse from here.
That's what you had requested for last week, go and look at and lay out until we get that.
So, since we finish up, okay. All right, then we will be on public comments items listed on the agenda. None, okay. Then we'll go to routine business then. And I want to get the big stack out of the way, did you have a chance to look at warrants?
Yes.
Is it? All right. And the next Linda has, we, these are the personal property add-ons and amendments that we see about every week. And we also have the collector's monthly statement, so I'm going to pass these down. And I'll initial, and I'll pass them down, trying to keep them in Linda's order here for. Here, let's get on the order.
Mm-hmm. I figured you would want to think that, just because.
I bet she would know how to.
How to sort them.
How to sort them. Joe, one of the previous commissioners. Like to click his management.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Just one of those deals, sitting there doing nothing else, you know?
Just a nervous habit.
Yeah, just one of those deals, when you're just doing something.
We used to get, they'd, he'd sit down there and click his. And then here's the collector's August settlement. The next item we have is the cable change. And that will be all Linda's list. Okay, so the next order of business would be public comments items not listed on the agenda. Nothing? Okay. Jack, do you have anything?
Nope.
No? Okay. So then, um, after that, we have other business and the only thing I would mention there is I am having Teresa go into our, um, database of better roads. And I'm having her add, um, the widths to the county roads. Those are, uh, sometimes, uh, needed. Uh, and this will be a quicker way. We can, we can pull that database up and know what the width of a county road is. And we're verifying that by, uh, by, by deed, uh, if, if in doubt. And if in doubt, and it's not verified, I gave Eric a sample earlier of a road that we couldn't find any, any information on it. It is a county road. We did receive cart funding on it. Uh, and any road by statute is established as a minimum of thirty feet. So we're gonna apply that logic to any road that we can't find any written documentation that this was forty feet, fifty feet, or whatever it was. And, uh, so that's just a project should start and might take two or three weeks to get it done. I think it'd be a good, a good addition and help us, uh, retrieve information quicker. We needed that recently. And it wasn't too long ago, we had another, uh, need for it. So hopefully that'll be, uh, accessible. Other than that, I don't have any, anything else. Anything for next meeting?
I guess, seen the email from Mike on the, uh, flowers and stuff and everything there, so I didn't know.
What was that on? I don't guess I've seen that one. For the, for the landscape.
Tree, yeah, landscaping for the tree and that front and stuff over there.
Yeah.
I didn't know if anybody else had looked at that or done anything or where we was at with that process. Had you looked at it, Steph?
I hadn't looked at it, Joe. Um, in discussion with Mike, he would want our opinion on that.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, but I also, it was kind of my understanding that that was gonna be a next year project, maybe?
Okay. Well, I thought I read some in there and seen some where it said for.
For the small.
This year's, yeah. So that's what I thought I'd seen.
Those are nice pictures there. Wow.
That print button does good stuff, Randy.
Linda won't let me print on it. It costs more.
Linda's not here, Randy. Forgiveness, not permission.
So my, my thoughts, uh, would be on the commission entrance. This is, we don't, this is a little much there, I think.
Mm-hmm. That's why I was at.
So what I would recommend is if we do anything, we do a couple of the evergreens only. Uh, but I don't think we need any, any flowers there.
That's where I was at. I didn't, yeah.
But I think those would be a nice addition, just like maybe over, along the, uh, retaining wall, the walk coming up on the second street side. I noticed there wasn't any. Uh, where's, where's this one at?
This is the stop sign. West Street University right there, so. Right here, Adams in it.
Okay.
Or here, that's a stop sign there on their side. That would be on their side, isn't it? Extension side?
Looks like, I don't know. Looks like they got some more on there. Uh, if, if I would do.
Well, no, it's on that side of the street right out here.
Okay.
Right here, the second, isn't it? Adams is over here.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, I mean, it's like they're front of bounds. I don't know. Cause I didn't think we was talking anything about that. It's on the street prior. That's what I was thinking. I thought we just talked about the tree. Cause I don't even remember having a discussion about this entrance even. Just the tree area is what I thought. Statue of Tree is what I thought we was talking about. So, which is what those are.
Then we do a piece meal, I guess.
Right, exactly.
So these are two different, uh, this is the back side.
That would be around the outside. See, this one here is not showing any of this rock stuff, which should know. With that, if any, that old stone rock, you'd say by a capstone or anything else might be able to be used. I mean, place that, I don't know if that's what that's supposed to simulate.
That is, somebody could use that as a resting seat.
Mm-hmm.
I believe was the intention on that. So somebody could sit there.
Yeah, and that's understandable. What I was saying though, is that some of the old stones, okay?
Yeah. Those are some of those foundation stones.
Correct. That's what I, yeah. That's what I was wondering if that would be in this.
Yeah.
That's pretty nice there.
And the red, white, and blue theme is obviously patriotic and, uh, for next, next year.
Especially for next year.
Yeah.
So, that was the only thing I seen that come up that, like I said, those two there, and I didn't. Cause I thought our discussion was just on this area.
Why don't we, why don't we do this, Joe? Whenever Mike comes in for the October, um, monthly report?
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we visit with him about this at that time?
You bet.
Okay? Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it'd be too late to get anything planned in.
Right, as far as for that type of stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and, and he's got it broke down here, I mean, in the separate stages of everything. You know, each part is done up on its own, so. So I think that probably his intent anyway, just, he probably had them out there and they seen the extra space and the extra stuff, so. It looks like he's got it separated and out.
Okay. Final call. Gentlemen? Okay. All right, we, uh, would, I would entertain a motion to, uh, recess, uh, and really don't need a motion for that. What, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go down to our warehouse. Uh, we had, uh, got that organized, cleaned out, uh, to the point of moving some, some equipment up front so we can, uh, relinquish the back half and reduce our rent and really match, match our need now. We had much, we had a lot of stuff in there we didn't, didn't need to hang around.
Right.
Would you gentlemen agree with that? Okay?
Yes.
So that's down at the west end of commercial. So we're gonna go there. And then, uh, after that, I don't see any reason to come back here. We'll, we'll adjourn after we get that project done. I did get a message from the Oleum Director. He may be here a little late, but he said he'd meet us down there. I assume you know the boat?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Nope? Okay. Let's go.